Good afternoon and welcome to this public meeting of the University of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees. My name is John Burbannick and it's my pleasure to serve as Chairperson of the Board. This meeting has been duly advertised as a public meeting in accordance with the Sunshine Act and is therefore open to members of the public as observers. This meeting is being streamed on the university's YouTube channel and a recording of the meeting will be made available on the Board of Trustees' website portal later. Participation in the meeting today is limited to members of the Board and those individuals the Board has invited in advance to take part. A quorum is present and as such we'll move forward with our agenda. Before delving into our meeting, I'd like to recognize several individuals first. One, with regret, I'd like to share that Emeritus Trustee Robert A. Paul passed away on November 15th. Bob served on the Board as an active member from 2004 to 2013 when he reached retirement age. I had the pleasure to serve with Bob and to know him well. He was then elected to honorary Emeritus Trustee status in October of 2013. During his tenure on the Board, Bob served on the Executive, Investment, and Health Sciences Committee. He also served on the UPMC Board of Directors, was awarded the University of Pittsburgh's 225th Anniversary Medalion in 2012, and I'd like to ask that we have a moment of silence in honor of Bob and his many contributions to us. Thank you for that. Second, we've had a few transitions amongst our Commonwealth trustees since our last meeting. It is that time of year. First, in October, Rob Ritten, our former Board Member, joined UPMC as the Senior Director of Government Relations and is applying his ample abilities with UPMC now. And as such, he did resign from our Board. And this month, Aaron McDowell's term has come to an end. We thank Rob and Aaron for their dedicated service to the Board of Trustees and to the University of Pittsburgh. Additionally, I wanted to note that Bill Lieberman, I believe our longest-serving voting trustee, has been reappointed by the Speaker of the House, Joanna McClinton, to an additional term as a Commonwealth trustee which will be ending in 2029. So our thanks to Rob and Aaron and our continued thanks to Bill for his service and commitment. So with that, I'd like to ask for approval on the minutes of our September 26th, 2025 public meeting. They were circulated in advance of today's meeting and were included in our meeting materials. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments and/or corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Thank you. The meeting minutes are approved. Next, I'd like for us to turn our attention to our able Chancellor for her Chancellor's Report. Madam Chancellor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everybody. I would like to begin by adding my condolences to the friends and family of Trustee Emeritus Robert Paul and on behalf of the university community express appreciation for as many years of service and countless contributions to all of our work for such an extended period of time as the Chair described. I also have some updates I would like to share. I'll start with our Fall 2025 class information. Members of the Board, it's very nice to have this opportunity today to update you on how the student census has come out. It was completed shortly after we last met, so I have final enrollment data for you for Fall 2025. As predicted, we welcomed the largest first-year class in Pitt history from a record-setting number of applications, nearly 65,000. The incoming class also includes a record number of both Pennsylvania resident students and a nearly 20% increase in rural Pennsylvania students, along with a record number and percentage of Pell recipients, 22.5% of the class. I'm also very pleased to report that regional campus enrollment also increased this year and that year-over-year enrollment is higher on each one of our campuses simultaneously for the first time in a decade. On the graduate and professional student side, enrollment increased by approximately 3.5% over Fall 2024, which is the fifth year in a row of grad student enrollment growth. So looking ahead to Fall 2026, first-year undergraduate applications to the Pittsburgh campus are running 23.7% up year-over-year, which is a very nice indicator of what we can hope to expect for next year's incoming class. On the government relations front, Governor Shapiro signed into law a $50.09 billion spending bill last month that included level funding for the university. The General Assembly also adopted the recommendations of the Performance-Based Funding Council as part of the Pennsylvania School Code. The legislature created the council, as you recall, in 2024 and charged it with developing a process to distribute funding to three of the Pennsylvania state-related universities, Pitt, Penn State, and Temple, using a metric-driven funding formula that incentivizes performance. So the formula was approved, no additional funding was yet appropriated, but we're optimistic that with this structure in place, we have the architecture for ongoing productive conversations in our partnership with the state legislature. And we're very grateful for this support and for the lawmakers' decision to continue this partnership and our shared commitment to a strong future for our students, the Commonwealth's workforce, and our economy as a whole. On the federal side, a bill was signed last month restarting federal operations after an extended government shutdown. We have very sincere appreciation to our Office of Government Relations and Advocacy who worked in partnership with the Provost's Office and the Senior Vice Chancellor for Research to make sure that all of our conversations with our state legislative partners and our federal government partners were productive, both in an ongoing way and in recent days and months. With regard to unionization, members of the Board, we continue to make steady progress in our two active collective bargaining processes. On the graduate student side, our most recent collective bargaining session was held on November 18th. To date, the parties have tentatively agreed to 10 collective bargaining agreement provisions with approximately 20 provisions under active negotiation and additional proposals expected and anticipated. The next bargaining session is scheduled for tomorrow and updates are available at gradstudentunionization.pitt.edu. On the staff side, collective bargaining agreements with staff representation are scheduled bi-weekly through the end of the year. The most recent was November 10th and at present, the parties have successfully reached tentative agreements on 14 collective bargaining agreement provisions with approximately 15 proposed provisions actively under negotiation. The next bargaining session is scheduled for this Thursday, the 11th, and regular updates on staff bargaining are available at staffunionization.pitt.edu. Nationally, we recently had the National Meeting of the Association of Public and Land Grant Universities in Philadelphia and several members of the university's senior leadership team were recognized and engaged in national service. Senior Vice Chancellor for Research, Rob Ruttenbar, was sworn in as Chair of the APLU's Council on Research. Vice Chancellor for External Relations, Lino Distillio, was continued in her role as Vice Chair for the APLU's Commission on Economic and Community Engagement, also known as CC, and I was honored to accept the gavel as the APLU's new Board of Directors Chair. We have some on-campus leadership changes. I recently named Kimberly Everly Sudre as my Chief of Staff. Kimberly filled the open role of Senior Director of Strategic Initiatives in the Chancellor's Office earlier this year. As a Pitt alumna, she earned a PhD in Administrative and Policy Studies from our School of Education in 2020. Now, as Chief of Staff, she joins the senior leadership team and assumes a role formerly held by Kevin Washo, who was elevated to Senior Vice Chancellor for External Relations in April. So many thanks to both Kimberly for taking on this new role and to Kevin for his service as Chief of Staff and all he's doing to ensure a smooth transition. Also, Dean of the School of Social Work, Betsy Farmer, announced her decision to step down as Dean and return to the faculty effective this summer, this coming summer, I should say. The Provost will form a search committee and launch a national search to find the next leader who will build on Betsy's many accomplishments. We're very fortunate to have her in the role of Dean through to next summer and in the meantime, please join me in congratulating Betsy for her longstanding and high-impact leadership and dedication to the institution. Members of the Board, in October, Pitt was very proud to host, along with our partners Carnegie Mellon University, the Global Federation of Competitiveness Councils, and the Council on Competitiveness, a three-day, first-of-its-kind crossover event between the Global Federation's Global Innovation Summit and the Council on Competitiveness national series called Across America. Under the theme of forging the future, the intersection of health, AI, and tech, we gathered innovators, entrepreneurs, and leaders from across the country and from over 20 countries around the world to explore how emerging technologies like artificial intelligence and advanced computing are reshaping healthcare, economic competitiveness, and global innovations. Coming out of the event, we made several key announcements. We launched our first online undergraduate degree, a highly-relevant Bachelor of Science in Health Informatics program from the School of Health and Rehabilitation Sciences. And we also announced an institution-wide agreement to deploy the state-of-the-art AI model clawed-for-education across all Pitt campuses. We were the first university to do so in partnership with industry leaders from Anthropic and Amazon Web Services. Ultimately, when fully deployed, this partnership will offer tools and potential so that we can transform the way students learn, how faculty are able to innovate, how the university operates administratively, and we can do all this driven by the creativity and application of our human users across the Pitt community. Very exciting development for us. Commencement is coming and on Sunday, December 14th, at 3:00 PM, we will hold our third university-wide winter commencement ceremony. This ceremony is for candidates who've completed requirements for undergraduate and graduate degrees either in the summer or fall of 2025. We're very pleased to announce that our commencement speaker will be the Honorable Debra Wince Smith, who is the President and CEO of the Council on Competitiveness that I previously referred to, and also the President and Founder of the Global Federation of Competitiveness Councils. Debra is a national and international go-to on innovation policy as well as ongoing changes in the workplace that will make a very big difference in the short and long term for our graduates. So I'm very much looking forward to hearing her message to them at commencement. And last but not least, as we like to conclude with some shout-outs, a shout-out to Rory Cooper and Jorge Candiotti of Pitt's Human Engineering Research Laboratories, or HURL. They were awarded a up-to-$41 million grant from the Advanced Research Projects Agency for Health, also known as ARPA-H, as co-PIers on a project to reimagine wheelchairs and assistive robotic arms that will improve the independence, safety, and quality of life for people with disabilities, including veterans. I'll add that Rory just received the Lifetime Achievement Award for U.S. Forces in Business, so Rory's having a good couple of months. A shout-out for a second year in a row for Pitt being named a leading disability employer by the National Organization on Disability, one of only two institutions of higher education on the list. A shout-out to three Pitt School of Medicine faculty who were elected to the National Academy of Medicine: John Byrd, who took over the UPMC Hillman Cancer Center on November 3rd; Chair of Pediatrics, Terrence Dermody; and former astronaut Kate Rubens, who is joining Pitt recently as a professor of computational and systems biology. A shout-out to Justin Kitzes in Biological Science, who was part of the team selected for one of 15 global awards in the Bezos Earth Fund's AI for Climate and Nature Grand Challenge. In partnership with the National Audubon Society, Justin's team will use the $2 million award to extend their work combining community-based conservation with artificial intelligence tools that track and monitor bird populations by their songs. A shout-out for the third consecutive year for Pitt being named one of Time Magazine and Statista's Best Colleges for Future Leaders. Pitt was number 32, up seven spots from last year, and improved from number 14 to number 13 amongst the AAU Publix. A shout-out to Pitt School of Law, which announced that its graduates achieved the highest overall bar passage rate in Pennsylvania for the July 2025 bar exam. A shout-out to Jamie Duker from the Office of Engagement and Community Affairs for being named amongst Pittsburgh Magazine's 40 Under 40. And a shout-out to Dr. Becca Siegel, a recent KME alum who was named to Forbes 30 Under 30 list in Manufacturing. A shout-out to Sasha Kotarsky from Sky for receiving the Helen Fallon Young Communicator Award, recognition by the Women's Press Club of Pittsburgh. And a shout-out to Monique Smith from the Office of the Provost for being recognized as one of the city and state 2025 Impact Honorees. A shout-out to Bernard Alexander from our Homewood Community Engagement Center for two recognitions this fall. He was named one of KDKA's 2025 Hometown Heroes and a community champion by the Black Equity Coalition. A shout-out to Pitt Women's Volleyball for being named one of the four number-one seeds for the NCAA tournament for the third consecutive year. They've also been seeded number one four times in the past five years and I know we're all looking forward to cheering for them on Thursday. A shout-out to our Pitt Student Athletes, who received a 94% graduation success rate, or GSR, this year, the highest on record for Pitt Athletics. And a shout-out to Pitt Athletics for hosting College Game Day, a nationally televised Saturday broadcast at Accrassure Stadium on November 15th. Amongst the festive environment that day was a sellout crowd of more than 68,000 fans, the retirement of Pitt Football Great Aaron Donald's #97 jersey, and a $30 million gift announcement from Pitt alumnus Michael Reese and his family to the David C. Frederick Honors College, which we recognized with the Reese family on the field. You'll hear more about that in just a few moments from Dean Nicola Foote. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. You're on mute, John, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Chancellor colleagues? Well, we will move on to an update on the David C. Frederick Honors College as the Chancellor intimated in her comments. It's always a strange transition for me because I feel like I'm talking to our very own trustee David C. Frederick in the third person, but it is indeed he and his wife Sophie and their generosity that brought much of this about. And at this time, it is my pleasure to welcome Nicola Foote, our Dean of the David C. Frederick Honors College, to provide an update on the excellent work occurring at the college as well as efforts to advance the Student Awards Plan, a key initiative in the Plan for Pitt 2028. Dean Foote, thank you for joining us today and please go right ahead.
Thank you so much. It's such a pleasure to be here and to talk to you about some of the developments in the David C. Frederick Honors College. And I will share that, this is just a very brief overview, I'm going to be coming back in February to talk in more depth about the Student Awards Plan. So today is just an overview. So some of the things I want to highlight, the David C. Frederick Honors College, of course, is one of the oldest honors colleges in the nation. We date back to the 1950s as a program and our founding dean, G. Alex Stewart, was one of the innovators of the idea of honors as an educational concept. So we have always been leaders in this space, but in the last few years, we've been through some really significant growth and changes, led by the naming of our college in honor of trustee David C. Frederick and his wife Sophie that we celebrated in 2022, as well as our expansion to the regional campuses and our recent gift in support of the Reese Chancellor Scholars. But during that whole time, our mission has remained the same, to advance the needs of the most talented, capable, and intellectually curious students at the University of Pittsburgh and to help them be the best that they can possibly be. We have been experiencing a period of extraordinary growth. There's huge demand and excitement around the idea of a Frederick honors education. Since 2018, our student numbers have grown by over 600% and we are now at 3,500 students. Most of our students are enrolled in the Honors Joint Degree Program, but we offer three academic credentials, including a distinction and of course, the B-Fill degree, which is one of the most prestigious undergraduate degrees available anywhere in the world, where one of only a handful of institutions to offer a B-Fill and to give you a sense of the company, wherein Oxford is one of the others. But that growth has not come at the price of selectivity. We have had extraordinary demand for a Frederick education, as I said. We received over 10,000 applications for our 700 seats in our incoming class. And our class of 2029 was the largest ever. So our goal is 700 students. We had 805 enroll with us this fall. And you can see the data here on the qualifications of our incoming class. So these are averages and they're truly stunning. 4.5 GPA, 1501 SAT, 34 ACT. And we have a very strong balance of in-state and out-of-state students. So we're both supporting the best students in the Commonwealth and recruiting students nationwide. We have also recently expanded to the regional campuses for the first time in Pitt's history. We launched Frederick at Greensburg in 2024. Many of you were there. I love this photo showing trustee Burbannick and trustee Frederick along with the Chancellor and Provost here. But we've had extraordinary success. In just one year, we have grown 390%. We are exceeding our enrollment targets. Those students include students from out of state, which is huge for us that those option students are accepting their places at the Greensburg campus. And among the successes, we've had Greensburg's first-ever Gilman Scholar and first-ever Fulbright applicant this year. And we have on preeminence for the first time through the excellent work that we've been doing. So we have this really long history. For the first time, we were named one of the official top honors colleges in the nation in 2024, when we were ranked number 11 by College Transitions. Since then, we've also been included on multiple lists of top honors programs and colleges, as you can see here. And that is based on our extraordinary success of our students. Our retention rates are some of the highest at Pitt, 96.6% first-year retention rate. Our honors completion rates are among the highest in the nation, 94.4%, compared to a national average of 55%. 100% of our students complete experiential learning, including research, study abroad, internships. And we have a 98.3% post-graduation placement rate. And we've been named a top producer of multiple national scholarships, as I'll share more about in just a moment. This success has been anchored by philanthropic investment and we are very lucky to be the only honors college in the nation that has investment from two of the Chronicle of Philanthropy's Top 50 philanthropists. In addition to trustee David Frederick, we also have philanthropic investment from renowned honors philanthropist John Martenson, who has supported honors colleges nationwide, including Purdue, Georgia Tech, the Air Force Academy, to name just a few. And then just last month, we got to celebrate another major philanthropic gift from Pitt's youngest transformational alumni donor, Michael Reese, who at just 50 years old is on the Forbes Billionaire List, a double-Pitt alumni with dual degrees in politics and philosophy and engineering. And I think what's really special about Michael is he came to Pitt as a Chancellor Scholar. He almost went to another university we won't talk about somewhere else in our state and he was personally recruited by G. Alex Stewart, offered a Chancellor Scholarship, and it changed his life. He won a Goldwater Scholarship, so he's passionate about national scholarships and he wants to pay that success forward. So his $30 million gift allows us to endow the Chancellor Scholarship in perpetuity to expand the number of Chancellor Scholars and in honor of that, we have named them the Reese Chancellor Scholars. We got to celebrate that last month. Many of you were there. Thank you for joining us. It was a joyful day at which the Reese family was centered and the honors students were centered. And we received enormous publicity and it was great to see Pitt and the honors college being recognized on the front page of the Post-Gazette and many other places as well. Now, the Student Awards Plan is a key part of this philanthropic gift and of the work that the Frederick Honors College is doing. And again, I'm going to come back and talk about this in more detail at your next meeting in the spring. But I want to make sure everyone is aware that Michael's gift was anchored by the Student Awards Plan. He was so inspired by Chancellor Gable's vision of the Plan for Pitt, the data-driven approach and this goal articulated under the Student Success Pillar, 1.6 increased distinguished student awards. And Michael asked, how can he help us do that? And so our goal is to work together to become the number-one public university producer of national scholarships. Now, this is already an area of existing excellence for us. We are officially already named a top Fulbright producer many years in a row now. We were just named a top BARN producer. We have been a top public producer for the Obama-Chesky Voyager. We've had a Rhodes finalist four years in a row. And among our many successes last year that you can see on the right, this is the full list of all the awards. Our Students One last year. There were some noteworthy successes, including Pitt's 14th Truman Scholar, our third Churchill Candace, our sixth Beinecke. And these successes came in a year of great complexity, as you all know, with shifts in the federal funding landscape. But despite that, we actually increased our yield rate in awards where the total pool of money went down. So the NSF GRFP is a great example of that, where we had eight winners for every 1,000. So as one school, we had that percentage of the award. And in the Fulbright, our yield rates are the highest in the nation. Only Yale even equals us. We out-yield Harvard, Stanford, and our rate of 37%, Penn State is 16%. So we are more than double. So the Student Awards Plan, I'm going to come back and talk about it in February, but I just want to give you a very quick overview that this really is a comprehensive cross-university effort to build on an extraordinary area of strength for us and help us support even more students into applying and competing for these awards. So we've convened a committee that draws leadership from every part of the university, including the Chancellor's Office, the Provost's Office, Student Affairs. We have identified faculty liaisons for every single undergraduate major at Pitt, so they are now the lead sort of point person for generating applicants. And we're reviewing every element of our academic operations to identify where can we tighten and enhance even more to yield more national scholarship applicants. And we've been launching new initiatives, including one I'm especially proud of with David Frederick's support, a new program at Oxford where we are taking our UK scholarship finalists ahead of their application. So they get to be together that summer, meet with potential mentors, and work on their application. So this has been really transformative. So again, I'll be back to talk about all of this in more detail, but what I want to briefly talk about now is how the Reese gift, the Michael Reese gift, is helping us advance the awards plan. So there are two big ways in which we are anticipating that this gift will really move the needle in student awards. The first is it allows us to introduce a really innovative new recruitment strategy where we are borrowing from athletics recruiting and thinking about reimagining our timelines and our approach to merit scholar recruitment. So we are starting to look for those scholars much earlier, in sophomore and junior year. We are being extremely proactive. We are identifying where are the best academic students in the nation. We are going to robotic tournaments, Model UN tournaments, and looking for those students who are competing in academic fields, science olympiads, those types of things. and looking for those students who are competing in academic fields, science Olympiads, those types of things. We're connecting with students. And we are meeting their families and, and helping them learn about all the amazing things that PIT and the Frederick Honors College have to offer. So we've recruited PIT's former captain of the football team, Cameron Sadler, to serve as our recruitment lead in this space, as he obviously knows all about athletic recruitment and has had a very long and successful career with OFA centrally. The other thing that we are working on is using the Reese gift to create the best merit scholars program in the nation so that those high-talent students that we identify will have all the support that they need to ultimately become very competitive for those awards like the Rhodes, the Truman, the Marshall. So that includes a pre-semester, a pre-for semester experience at Oxford. So before they even come to PIT, we're introducing them to the idea of you could be a Rhodes Scholar. Seminars, training in leadership, guaranteed research funding, high-level community engagement work. All of these things are now guaranteed parts of the Reese Chancellor Scholar experience. And with the gift, we are also able to hire additional support staff, including the recruitment specialists that we talked about, but also others that can help them compete for national scholarships and support them while they're here. So we're very excited about this. This really allows us to have the best experience for, for merit scholars anywhere in the nation. So again, happy to answer any questions, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Dean Foote. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments for the dean? I see Marley Myers. Marley, please.
Hi, thank you, Nicola. That was amazing, and Nicola's tenure has been amazing at our honors college. I'd like to point out a couple of really unique aspects of our successful honors college that I feel, and I see David has his hand up, so I hope he can endorse this, that I feel really distinguish us nationwide. And the first is that we recruit some of the very best low-income, first-gen students in the region and in the country. And many of our most successful honors college students are first-gen, are from low-income families, and we support them every step of the way. And they're not only going on to change their own lives, but it's a generational change for their families. So it's really an amazing accomplishment. I think a lot of honors colleges are catering to a more elite, high-income group of students, and we are extremely inclusive in our approach. And the second is that with this, you might think that this emphasis on national scholarships and awards is somehow elitist, but in fact, it's inclusive across the honors college and it's inclusive across the university because honors courses and advancement into the honors college is available to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Molly.
And I see trustee Berrien, please.
Thank you, Chair. And Nicola, you know, I'm a fan of yours, a great presentation. As you know, one of our great alums is teaching at Oxford now. So I'm assuming that maybe even with that free, the free collaboration you're doing, that he's involved at all? Daniel is? Daniel Armonia?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are lucky enough to have this extraordinary network of, of, of incredible alumni who are partnering with us, and thank you for, for allowing me to talk about Daniel for a moment because he is the most winningest national scholarship recipient in PIT's history. He won the Goldwater, the Truman, and the Rhodes. Only four other people in American history, period, have ever done that. And he's, you know, did that as a representative of PIT and the Frederick Honors College. And he now, it won't surprise you to hear, he's an endowed chair at Oxford. So absolutely, he is partnering with us on this. He worked with our students this summer. He met with them. And we're working actually to create a kind of version, a global version of the Brackenridge where students, that PIT students can go to Oxford and work with Oxford faculty, and the Oxford students can come here and work with our faculty and, and Daniel's spearheading that. So thank you. Yeah, we're, we're so lucky.
Okay, Daniel's one of my lucky that I'm super proud of.
Oh, wow. I didn't know that connection. Amazing.
Been amazing. So proud of him.
He's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you, Celisa. And now, it's a pleasure to call on the actual David C. Frederick. Justie Frederick, please.
I just want to say a couple of things. One, Nicola and her team have done an extraordinary job, and it's always an enormously gratifying thing as someone who's tried to give back to the university to see what can happen with those resources. And I also want to publicly thank Michael Reese and his family in this context of the trustee meeting. Their gift is going to be an absolutely transformative bolt of resources into an already growing and phenomenal program. And what Michael and his family have done is something that I'm, I'm, I just couldn't be happier about. And I hope that it will help inspire other people to be thinking about ways that they can promote excellence at, at the university. So thanks for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you, David. And, you know, let me observe. I've had the, the pleasure, I think, of hearing from Dean Foote well over a dozen times and being in her, in her presence. As you all heard and observed, no one is a better ambassador of the Frederick Honors College than our, our own Dean Foote. But the truth is, much of what you just heard about in the distinction, we owe a great debt of gratitude to the visionary leadership, the energy, and, and all your work, Nicola. And we can't thank you enough, and keep it up, and we're behind you. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much. It's a privilege to be in this role and, and so proud of the work our team's been able to do. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. And with that, I should ask if there's any additional business to be brought before the board today? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. I wish you all a happy holiday season.